You're on WLNZ 89.7 Lansing and W-
Good evening, I would like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for May 15th. And if our clerk could please call the rule.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Each member is present.
Thank you very much. And Vice President Garza, we have the minutes of May 8.
Okay, I move the minutes of May 8, Committee of the Whole, meeting as written.
All right, we have a motion in the minutes, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda this evening is the presentation of the general fund- Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. I totally forgot, thank you. This is an opportunity for public comment, if anyone would like to come forward to the podium and address the council, this is your opportunity. You will have three minutes, and please state your name for the record.
Michael Lynn. Thank you guys for having this meeting, and I'm really interested to see what comes out of this. After all the budget talks that I sat through for my first time, it was very interesting to hear how the city was spending the money. Listening to you all ask questions of the departments and department heads was extremely hopeful, is the best word I can use. I've been disappointed in you all for years now, after listening to the questions that you were asking, my personal conversations with most of you all about this budget, being here and speaking on all of it, I know, confident, some serious changes are about to be made. I've been looking through our past budgets from 2017 all the way up to now, and they just grown exponentially for what we're not seeing a return on investment for. That seemed to be agreed upon by all of you all sitting up here. I think that, you know, I had asked a question at one of our budgetary meetings that Neighborhood Citizen Engagement had, and I asked, "Are we spending more money than we're bringing in?" And the answer that I got from the mayor was that our budget has to be balanced every year, no matter what. And I knew the answer to that question, but in a respect for trying not to be who everybody thinks I am in that meeting, I didn't say anything. But it seems like you all pulled it all out over this last four weeks. So I appreciate that, or excuse me, two months. But in our, in Vergis last year here, in Mayor Shore's first year, our budget was balanced. We put out as much as we brought in, almost to the dime. And then as we went along, year after year after year, it just got bigger and bigger and bigger of what we put out compared to what we brought in. So you all recognize that. I've sat right here and looked up there as I spoke on these things and seen the nods of affirmation, that yep, we see it too. I've heard the conversations about the over-budgeted mayor's office, HRCS, how they couldn't explain to you all what they do, the double mayors and the triple mayors and assistants of the assistant. I've heard that come out of pretty much everybody's mouth up here. So I'm pretty confident you are going to make the right changes that we need to move Lansing forward and deal with this budget crisis that we all have known has been looming for years and years, but this just come to an end at this point. I'm hoping, I'm praying, and I'm pretty confident I'm not going to hear a conversation of, "We're going to let it go this year, and next year we'll handle it." This council won't look the same next year. I'm not confident that we can get it done past that point. I am confident today is the day, again, through all the conversations I've had with you all, and everything that I've seen from you on this dais, that you guys recognize the issues that have been going on and how our budget's been spent. You recognize that even your last four or five years of signing off and rubber stamping that has almost been complicit. So I know we're not going to do that again today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Thank you. Jody Washington, East Side. I'm going to start this by saying, "I know how this process works. You're not fooling me. I know how it works, been there, done that, and I know how it operates." So here's what I'm going to say, I'm really hoping we're not going to get a budget that's nothing more than smoke and mirrors. And by that, I mean no real cuts. Don't tell me we're going to do a hiring freeze because you weren't going to fill those positions anyway. Don't tell me we're going to, "Oh, we're going to keep it at this year's budget," because those aren't cuts. That's the status quo. Those are smoke and mirrors. I don't want to hear that. You have listened to people over the months say they want real cuts and real progress. We got two deputy mayors, a deputy to the deputy mayor, we got all kinds of things, people don't know what they do, duplicated services. And I'm going to say, "I know how it works. Ask all the tough questions, then the mayor calls everybody. What can we do? How can we settle this? What can I give you and you give me, and we'll stay where we're at right now, and I'll come back in September, October and ask for more money, and then I get exactly what I wanted anyway?" I know how it works. So you can't fool me, you can't fool the people. I'm tired of this process. I'm tired of people, frankly, getting elected that don't know how to do the budget. Because this is the only voice you have. You have no other power. And for the mayor to tell you how you are going to handle that power is unconscionable. Everything else you do is reactive. You either approve or disapprove what he brings to you. All you have is the budget. And year after year after year, it's garbage. Year after year, we see nonsense. And I'm fed up. I'm totally fed up. This is my money you're playing with, not yours. Patricia, I hope you stick by your guns of taking $200,000 out of HRCS for four warming centers. I don't want to hear about the mayor coming back like he promised for $800,000 for homelessness, because that's certainly not in the budget. But I read it in the paper. So don't play the game. We're tired of it. I know how it works, and I will know exactly what happened when I see what you pass.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on into our presentations, and our first presentation has to do the general fund status report for the third quarter. And if we could have you up to the table, Ms. Kirkland and Jackson. Again, make sure your green light is on, and we will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. And Jackson, we'll give you an update what we are from the third quarter.
Yeah, so for fiscal year '23, the city budgeted for about $145.8 million in revenue, including transfers, and just over $155.5 million in expenditures. The city's fund balance policy recommends a fund balance that's between 12% and 15% of expenditures. With estimated expenditures of $155.5 million, the recommended fund balance is between $18.6 and $23.3 million. General fund revenue collected through the third quarter of fiscal year '23 are above expectations. 77.1% of the budgeted revenue has been received, which is 6% higher than the three-year average when you look at past third quarter. For property taxes, those represent 33.2% of general fund revenue budget, and those are largely collected at the beginning of the fiscal year. They were initially estimated to be $48.245 million, and at the end of the third quarter, collections were roughly $46.1 million. Although collections are currently below estimated amounts, they are still subject to tax appeals and other adjustments throughout the fiscal year. Income tax makes up almost 26% of general fund revenues, and collections are above third quarter targets. At the end of the third quarter, income tax collections were around $27.3 million, which is 72.8% of its budgeted amount. And this exceeds the three-year average for March 31st. Return on equity represents payments to the city from BWL. Historically, those payments have been received in December and June. However, the new agreement calls for quarterly payments. The year-to-date amount is almost $14 million. However, BWL did notify the city that the next quarterly payment will be in the amount of $6,41,324. State revenues represent almost 15% of general fund revenue budgets, and the quarter-three year-to-date is just over $14.15 million. Charges for services are trending ahead of three-year average for the third quarter. Fines and forfeitures are budgeted for just under $1.7 million, and quarter-to-date, they are trending below expectations, just as in previous quarters. And this is because of court-cost penal cases and other ordinance fines, they have been down. Licenses and permits are budgeted for just about over $1.7 million, and the city has received 66.6% of that budgeted amount. Interest in rents and other revenues together make up 0.4% of general fund revenues. Interest in rents, they are trending below expectations. And other revenues, it might seem, so for the miscellaneous, it was budgeted for $173 million, but the March 31st actuals was just over $450,000, and that is where the opioid money settlement was placed, so that's where that is at. Overall, the revenues are exceeding expectations. This is due to higher income tax numbers, return on equity, and charges for services. As for the expenditure summaries, I'll go over some of the notable departments. For example, the Circuit Court. Last fiscal year, there was one payment made to the Circuit Court building rental in February, and this payment this year was made actually in March. For the Clerk's Office, the reason why the Clerk's Office is higher is because the city had two elections early in the quarter, so they skewed the expenditures towards those. As far as EDP, EDP expenditures are high because of the general fund LEPF subsidy. The almost $2 million was given out in the first quarter alone, so it's going to skew year-to-date numbers. For assessing an HR, the reason why these are so low is because there have been less expenditures on salaries and payroll fringes. And for the Human Service Agency support, the reason why this is higher is because of higher expenditures for chronic homeless outreach and community problem solving. And we are working on their carryforwards, and we'll have them before council before the end of the fiscal year. Now, if revenues expenditures continue in the trend that they are going now, the city will not have to use as much upper reimbursement money as was previously approved in the amount of $9.7 million. The administration continues to monitor expenditures and seek the necessary savings to maintain the vital services for the city of Lansing. And I believe the vacancy factor is a separate-
Yes.
So I can go ahead and take any questions now.
So, at this time, are there questions? See any questions? Guess the only question I would have is, when you said the Board of Water and Light currently is almost $14 million, we're getting another $6 million, that only takes us to 25. So that takes us, I'm sorry, to 18 million, and we have 25 projected. So are we going to meet that or not meet that?
Yeah, so the 14 million, that's obviously not including the 6 million. So that's actually going to be posted after March 31st, so it won't be included in any report we run in one solution.
But it's still short what was projected. You said 14-
Yeah, so we still have one more payment left, so-
That's what I was asking.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll just go on to the vacancy report.
So for the vacancy report, for general fund, there was an increase of about five full-time positions that were vacant. And for non-general fund, it was about 14 positions. The year-to-date vacancy factor for the general fund is just above $2.3 million, and non-general fund is just under $2 million.
Are there any questions on the vacancy factor? I forgot to ask Emily. Emily, did you have anything? Are there any questions on the vacancy factor? Seeing none. All right. Thank you very much for those third quarter reports. As we move into our next items, the way I'm going to do this is to tell people, remind people that in your packet are the answers to questions from April 10th, 24th, May 1st, and May 8. We're not going to read over those. Those were provided for you. Before we go into budget policies, what we're going to do is look at the budget resolution first. So with that, I'm going to give a brief explanation and then ask for a motion by Vice President Garza, and then we'll open it up for discussion, and if people have additional amendments. The first thing I'd like to stress is budgets are difficult, no matter how you look at them. And I know that there are some people who have sat in the hot seat, we'll call it, at the table in the well, and been asked a series of questions, and felt maybe that those questions were personal, or that they were being reprimanded, or that they were being attacked. I want to assure you that I do not believe any council member up here was doing that. What they were trying to do was to get information to be able to make thoughtful decisions as they looked at their budget material. So I first want to stress that. Second of all, we have definitely heard from the community and what a number of their issues are concerning the budget. I think loud and clear has been the message repeatedly was that we learn to live within our means. That's something that we've heard from council members on the dais, as well as the public. Living within your means, even though we do have a rainy day fund, needs to make sure that it is raining, not just because there is a fund there that we can dip into. And so it is important, when we're putting a budget together, that unless there is some criteria that has come up, and having been on this council a number of years, I know why the rainy day fund was created. I know what the goal was of the rainy day fund, to have money in reserves. And I know the few times that we've had to use it was to make sure that we continued to give services to the public. In looking at the budget, I had presented back on May 8, the proposal at looking at a reduction of operating expenses of either 5% or 10%. And having some talks with the mayor's office and looking at those, there were some issues that came up with that. So the internal auditor and I worked on some additional amendments as a way to look at this. Those additional amendments that we looked at would allow us to live within our means and would- Oh, there it is, never mind. Live within our means and would allow us to make sure that we were not using any of the rainy day fund and actually putting some additional dollars back in to the rainy day fund. We're looking at, the mayor's proposed budget was for $163,989. Excuse me. $163,989,330. That would be using about $2.6 million of the rainy day fund. The budget that the internal auditor and I came up with was a budget of $159,367,303, which is a savings of $4,621,700. 2.6 of those would have been the rainy day fund, so we would be saving approximately $2 million as part of that. In conversations with the mayor, it was something that he felt that he could live with. There are cuts to operational department budgets. We all know that there will be some potential of carryforwards at the end of this year. Our fiscal year ends June 30th, and we'll be looking at a budget amendment from the mayor's office at that time. And there are still vacant positions, so there is the potential of, in December, the mayor bringing forth of operational expenses. We're to the point that they needed to ask for additional money, that there would be that opportunity. We did not look, and when I say we, I'm talking about the internal auditor and I, did not look at personnel expenses. And the reason for that is, as we sat here today and looked at the fact that we have 81 general fund positions and 47 non-general fund positions, these are positions that need to be filled. The minute that you start reducing personnel lines, there is always the thought process that you got by with it this year by not filling that position, and so why do you need to fill it? We are down to, in the general fund, we have, the employees, we have 900, and I believe the number is 62, doing the service for this entire city. That's anywhere from sweeping streets to ambulance runs, to patrolling, to collecting your taxes in the treasurer's office, to a variety of things. I have been on this council long enough to know what happens when we start reducing positions. What it ends up meaning is, when you're reducing positions, you end up reducing the services that you're giving. And that has an impact on all of us. So with that, I would ask the Vice President to move the amendment that I have brought forward. We'll then open it up for discussion, as well as allowing anyone who might have additional amendments to speak at that time. So with that, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So with that, I would move the amended budget as written.
Thank you. Now we will open this up for, yes, Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I really do appreciate the work you put in. I have a couple of questions about how this was formulated. Because I see some departments taking a 33% hit to operations, like the Parks and Rec Department, and some taking 11%, some taking various levels in between. It doesn't seem to be spread out equally among the departments that were impacted. Internal auditor for one is 100%.
Pardon?
Internal auditor for one is 100% reduction in operating budget.
Correct. And did you want to explain how we got to that?
Sure, just give me one second. So these numbers were gotten to by taking the projected budget for FY '23 that we got from finance, and then they were subtracting the FY '23 adopted personnel budget, and then adding in the FY '24 mayor's proposed budget. So basically projecting the savings from FY '23, and then making that cut with no changes to personnel.
But, okay, so I have a question on that. So you use the total department budget as a projection?
Yes.
Backed out the personnel?
Right. So a lot of those savings in FY '23 were personnel, and then, but this is just operating. So it's taking that entire number and then putting it all towards operating for-
Did you, maybe I'm not, sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding. So I don't have the projections in front of me. So let's just use $100 for if we could. $50 in operations, $50 in personnel. Let's say we're only expected to spend $25 in personnel and $50 in operations, leaving us with $75. Would the number in front of me reflect $25 cut, or would it reflect a $50 or a $0 cut in operations if there was a $0 projected cut?
It wouldn't. It would reflect that personnel number, so-
So I guess my question is, if the deficit, if the overspend, over-projection, rather, is in personnel, where we have 82 open positions, maybe it's for you, Councilmember Wood, not Emily, is for open positions that may not have been filled this year, may not have been filled last year or the year before, wouldn't that be more structurally sound to eliminate the position that we're not filling, instead of eliminating, for instance, $1.2 million in the Parks Department, where we're spending it on equipment, fuel, and vehicles, and community center supplies and things like that? I mean, I'm with you, Councilmember Wood, on bringing as many employees as we can into the city, but clearly we have a lapse in the number of employees we're able to recruit. I think we should be supporting the employees that are left here to do the job by cutting their operations budget. I don't know how that's helping them do their job. So I'm trying to understand the rationale behind it.
And again, as I stated earlier, one of the options that is out there is based on the vacancy factor that we currently have, and that is over almost $4 million. That, those carryforwards could go in with a recommendation from the mayor to help fill in for those operational dollars in the Parks Department. Mayor-
I guess my, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I guess my question is, could we then not just up the vacancy factor, instead of giving the-
And that, that was, one recommendation was to increase the vacancy factor to 4.5 million.
Yeah.
The problem with that is, then you're keeping those positions, you have the potential of keeping those positions vacant in order to fill that void.
I know, but I guess the incongruency for me is, we know we spent that much in operations, we did not spend that much in personnel. So this feels like maybe there was some, a hammer versus a scalpel taken to these departments.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
You know, I think the thing was, we were trying to come up with something that demonstrated that we were living within our means, but also gave us the, made sure that we were going with the scenario that we were trying to hire and fill these positions, so-
I guess I would just push back a little bit. We're not living within our means. We're saying we want our electric bill to be less, and we'd like to bring more people into the household, but, so I won't argue anymore, because it's a bad practice to argue with you, Councilmember Wood, but I appreciate the work that you've done on this and the effort that you put into it. Thank you. I just want to be clear, too. I'm not against making some structural changes to this budget. I think we absolutely need to do that, and-
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Spatafor, but you know, I passed, and I understand that you were sick, so I give you that. But I passed this out on May 8th and did not hear from- But I passed this out on May eighth, and did not hear from anyone other than trying to work through this, this, to have something that we have in front of us tonight, and working with the internal auditor, and working with the administration to try to come up with something that was on the table, that we could get through, and that would make a difference. As Jim will remind you, and the issue that he's been drumming in my ear for the last two weeks is, you have to pass the budget tonight. And so mine was to come up with it. To be perfectly honest, we could turn around and put everything in a control account and do nothing, you know, but this is what is before us right now.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Mayor Shore.
I, again, I don't want to get, jump into the conversation, I just want to stress, you know, it...
Is your microphone on?
It is.
Okay, sorry.
Can you pull it a little closer?
Is this, is this better?
Having a little trouble here.
All right, sorry. I just wanted to stress, and the important piece of this, that we've had Councilwoman Wood and I have had several conversations, and I appreciate that. The important piece of this for me is that, you know, we do have, I think it's five, one, two, three, four, five departments that are gonna, under this, would start the, the year with zero in operations. Now we, again, what she said is, I want to make sure everybody heard that, you know, we're gonna have carryforwards. Certainly our, our city attorney's office, our community media are assessing by law needs to have operations, so we will be coming with a, with a carryforwards resolution, and I greatly hope that, that council will pass it, because we can't have assessing, not sending out assessments, we can't have our city attorney not filing cases and things. So that, that to me was really important, and again, that was a, a big part of our conversation, and that will be something we'll send, and I hope that, that folks will take that very seriously, that, that there are some operations that will need to be backfilled, but we will utilize dollars from the existing, the current fiscal year twenty-three budget, not the fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Correct.
So that way, it's a carryforward from current year of excess dollars. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, knows that, that that is a tremendously important, for me, piece of this puzzle, because there are just things that we, we have to do. So thank you for, for raising that, Madam President, and I look forward to that as the next step.
All right, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of thoughts. So, one is, yes, I too, like probably many of my council members, am open to cuts...
I, I'm not sure, Jason back there, I think our mics need to be turned up a little. Thank you.
Mine, hello, hello, all right. So I'm open to cuts and trying to address the structural deficit, if there is one, and also just trying to save. However, with the proposal, there's a couple of concerns. One, just hearing the Parks and Rec, I guess I wonder, does anybody know how that would affect, for example, Parks and Rec? Because some of us, maybe me in the past, said, I am not for cutting Parks and Rec. I love Parks and Rec, I love Parks, I certainly love Rec, because my kids, they play on sports teams, I'm the coach, I know they give us, you know, soccer balls, using all that stuff. So what would the consequences be for Parks and Rec, since that's one of the bigger slices there? And also, this might go to the internal auditor here, Emily, and what, if any, effect would passing this first amendment have on potential future amendments? And like, can they be, still fit in together?
Yeah, it, it would depend. I ran the numbers on all of the different amendments with this, but some that take out of operating would be affected, for sure.
Okay, so operating of, of operating from where?
Pretty much any amendment that takes out of operating costs in a department would be affected by this.
Okay, so if we, for example, passed this amendment, and then passed another amendment that touches operating, would it reconcile itself because one got passed and then the other got passed? I guess...
My understanding is that they would compound on each other, but, like, it would be in addition.
So, okay, let me just try to figure this out then. So if we pass the first amendment, and for hypothetical, I have amendment that uses operating costs, would we, and it passes, would it, would it then take what we first passed with Council President Wood, and then kind of like add, like, if it, if it, if there was thirty percent, and then what someone proposes would increase that number, so now it's not thirty percent, or thirty-three percent, now it's twenty-five percent of a cut? Could it work like that?
I'd have to ask President Wood, but I, I think that it would be in addition to the cut. So if this takes a hundred thousand dollars from a department, and yours takes a hundred thousand dollars from the department, I don't think those can cancel each other out.
Okay, so let's just say it wasn't exactly a hundred thousand, but would we then have to, if we, so you're saying we can't pass anything, or are you saying that we would have to amend the first amendment, or how, how could that come together?
So if you pass additional amendments, it would just take more money out of the operating budget? You can pass it, but, I mean, you would be taking what was passed out of the operating budget, and then any additional amendments would add on to that, but doesn't, I see some other people.
But also understand, yeah, just a second. Also in understanding that there are other places, since this is out there, and the motion's been made, that if you had an amendment that has from operating, that you could look at another location. Having said that, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. That's what I was gonna say, is that you've got operating and you've got personnel, right?
Yes.
So, you know, you don't necessarily need to do an amendment that takes money out of the operating budget, you could do an amendment that takes money out of the personnel bu, out of the personnel side, and it doesn't touch the operating side.
I understand, it's just that I'm concerned that, you know, we're supposed to come with everything lined up, for the most part, and then if we pass maybe this big first one, then whatever we had potentially lined up, that we've determined very important from constituents and listening to the public, then it just has less of a chance of passing. I almost think it would be wise to go through the amendments, and then what's left, take from there, but I just want to see, I just don't want to see one thing, you know, kind of hamper everything else. That might be, you know, like, say, oh, we can't, we can't vote, we can't do that.
But it's the budget that we're talking about. So it's the budget as a whole that, what we're talking about. If you have an amendment, you're, you, when you keep saying amendment, it's the entire budget. So if you have an amendment, the amendment impacts the entire budget, there is no amendment that's on the floor. Is that what I'm understanding, Councilmember Wood?
The proposed budget.
The proposed budget is on the floor.
From, from what I'm...
Exactly, there's no amendment, it's the budget.
It's the proposed budget that I, that was moved by...
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it still is a concern that when we did our, you know, amendments, it had to come from the original proposed budget from the mayor, and then now the council-proposed budget could potentially mess up any other council member's numbers, and then make it not feasible, or even possible. And that's just a concern, and I, that's why I was asking the question, if there's any reconciliation there. And it sounds like, no, there's not. So, I don't know. Anybody else can help me with that thought? I appreciate it.
Are there other questions or comments? This is the time, if you have something that you'd like to propose. Councilmember Koss.
Thank you, President Wood. So, we sat here for several weeks, hearing each department come in, our unions, officials came here, they talked to us about their desperate need for equipment. We had staff come in, and we asked, and it was never personal, I, I think that President Wood had mentioned that, and I want to reiterate that, it was never personal, it's, I'm a taxpayer, and I represent taxpayers, and we want to know what is happening with our money. And in asking questions of staff members, when you hear, I'm sorry, or, no, I'm, rather you hear, I'm helping constituents all the time, and then you question when that help is coming to those constituents, was it yesterday, was it the whole week before, and, well, no. That's frustrating, because many of us up here are working until midnight every night with, with citizens who have tried to reach out to the proper channels and gotten nowhere. So I would like to propose two amendments to this budget.
And I think you have those to pass out to council members?
Yes. Yes. The first amendment would take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the mayor's personnel, and fifteen hundred from the mayor's promotion, and would invest it into our streets, our local street fund. The second amendment would...
Let's do them one at, we have to do them one at a time.
Okay, sorry.
So that's your, your amendment?
Yes.
Would someone like to, is there anyone that would like to speak to this amendment? Was there, Councilmember Jackson?
So, my thoughts is that I do want to support just about any amendment from council, because I would like to look at us as, even though we're not an equal branch, but close to equal, or co-equal branch, and with the budget as much as it is, and the amendments really don't, like a hundred and fifty thousand, for example, it's a lot of money, but in the grand scheme, it's not that much. So if Councilmember Koss wants that, I would like to support him. With this, though, I'm, I'm a little bit, like, the local street fund, I know it's a priority for so many constituents, it's just that with the streets and sidewalks particularly, as much as I want to have them, I just feel like that's just a, a drop in the bucket, and it might cover a fraction of a mile of fixing things. So this one, I'm not sure about, but I just wanted to put my thoughts on there, because I'm not sure that I'll support this one, but I still, in the name of working with my colleagues, want to support things. I, Brian, I'm just not sure I'm gonna support this one. Maybe if I could add a friendly amendment, and switch the amount going to the local street fund, and putting it towards a locally-run warming center, then I would support that, because that's gonna be one of my amendments, and I do want to see those priorities go through. But I won't make that friendly amendment unless you say to do it.
Each one of these are gonna have to be voted on. So if you want to amend his amendment, then we'd have to vote on that.
Let me see, Ryan? So you go for it? Go. I would make a friendly amendment to apply that from going to the local street fund to going towards locally-run warming centers.
And that, I'm assuming, would go to HRCF?
Yes, it would.
Okay. So, so first of all, I need to stress, and I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney, as these amendments are coming forward, if there is anything you need to recuse yourself on, because these amendments, you might need to recuse your vote. And so you need to make sure that, that you're mindful of that, Mr. City Attorney. Make sure your mic is on.
Yes, this is a discussion that we have every year, and it deals with the charter provisions on conflict of interest. In 5505, conflict is defined, and it's important to read it, because if you are receiving benefit or income, directly or indirectly, from any action of the city, and I'm paraphrasing it, you have a potential conflict of interest and cannot vote on it. The charter also has a provision, can you hear me on this?
Yes.
The charter also has a provision for the process. So any member of the council can raise a conflict of another member or themselves. And when that happens, it goes to a vote, and each member votes on the question before the determination. But the member who's being mentioned as having a conflict doesn't vote on it, so then it's a two-thirds vote to recuse that person. So my suggestion is, if there are amendments, or if there's something in the budget, then it may be potential to remove that item and vote on it separately.
Yeah. Councilmember Spitzley, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam President. Question to Councilmember Jackson, are you talking about one, or are you talking about regionally?
So what I worked on is to have the four community centers be kind of outfitted or capable of becoming a warming center. I mean, there's gyms in there, there's, some of them have showers, they all have bathrooms. I think that possibly the only expenses might be a staff person, and maybe like cots, and maybe some basic stuff like that. But, long story short, is what, I, I can't go another year, another winter, with the same problems that people are facing, because every winter, it's like, oh, surprise, it's freezing cold, and we have a bunch of people outside, and we all want to do something. But then every year, we can't do anything, because there's no money for it, budgeted, and then it's like, oh, well, put it in your budget priorities, we've all done that. And then it's like, okay, well, put it in the budget, so, working on that now. I have heard, I believe it was from the mayor or somebody, that they requested a grant to get some money to possibly make a shelter, or turn a building into a shelter, but really, I don't, we don't have that money, and if we do, I'm sure we can do amendment like we always do. But I want to put something forward that will address this, so that we might not be able to get everybody off the streets, but if we can get some people off the streets, and try to protect our lowest, I guess, maybe weakest link, if you will, because we're only as strong as our weakest link, so if we can get the unhoused people at least warm during the dangerously warm or cold times, then that's what I want to do. And I know there's a little controversy about where money comes from, I understand that, but I can't think of anything that's a higher priority than getting people off the street so that they're safe.
Madam President, if I may, I, I'm going to support your amendment. My, if you see the budget priorities that we're putting, the budget policies and priorities that we're putting forth to the administration, you'll see that I am requesting a study and a cost to run community centers as warming and cooling centers for approximately sixty days in a year, which would include utilities, staff, and security, and report back to council no less than September first, 2023. And that's in my budget priorities, because I do think we need to have a handle on exactly how much this is gonna cost. However, I will support your amendment, because I think we need something done for the winter that is coming. I mean, even though we have a study done on September first, it will take a while for it to ramp up. So I, I will support the amendment.
Okay, I have Councilmember Brown, and then I saw that the mayor asked to be recognized. And, I'm sorry, I, we'll do Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Hussain, and then we'll go to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Jackson, I hear what you're saying. My question was, and I don't know if she spoke to it or not, but you say warming center, you're also talking about cooling for the hot times as well? Okay, I just want to make sure that was clarified, if we're talking about warming and cooling versus just warming. Thank you.
Councilmember Hussain.
I, I guess my question is, what's, what's the thought behind putting that? If we're, if we're going to operate these at the four community centers to provide for proximity and accessibility? and accessibility, why would we not position this money with Parks and Rec as opposed to HRCS?
So that's probably, I mean, it's a good question. I worked with, so I'll give you a sneak peek, if I may, of my amendment because if this doesn't pass, I'm going to still bring my amendment for the warming center. I just worked with our internal auditor and then we thought that was an appropriate place because, just because of the work that that department does versus Parks and Rec. I guess the building is true, we're using the city Parks and Rec building, but I imagine that would probably be the extent of Parks and Rec's service. But I just figured it fit better in HRCS because of the work that they do that resolves around people and helping them.
Council, President, Mayor Shore, were you done?
Well, I've had conversations with Councilman Jackson on that idea and I'm certainly supportive of the idea. I am tremendously disappointed that folks are looking at my budget, to go after my budget. You know, my staff work hard regardless of what people think. My staff work hard. They do a lot of work for our constituents, all of them. And to pull $118,000 out of temporary help means pretty much we'd have no interns, we'd have no temporary assistance. We have departments throughout the city that have that and you'd be pretty much eliminating it there. And $150,000 is one or two positions in my office. So you're telling me to lay somebody off or two people off? And that, to me, is disappointing. I'm certainly interested in creating, helping to create warming center. I'm supportive of what Councilman Jackson's talking about. I'm fine with figuring out, can we use community centers in the toughest times? Are there buildings? These are all things that are worth talking about. But I am tremendously disappointed that this is coming-
Please.
-from my budget when I have not questioned anybody else's budget and the needs that people have. You know, I was very happy to support city council's budget when it was brought to me. I was, thought the increase was fair. So this is disappointing to me that this is going to come by laying off my staff in order to make it happen rather than looking at how we can do this throughout the city. Thank you.
Just wanted clarification from Councilmember Cost. So we're talking about the first one, the 118, or are you talking about the 150?
This is the 151,0500. The promotion and the mayor's personnel.
Out of the salary.
Sorry, then this is just the first one? This is the salary one, the personnel?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, I'll say all that for that. Is the money going into personnel or operations at HRCS?
This would be an operational. It would go into operational for HRCS. Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I liked what Councilman Hussein was asking about, would this be more appropriate in Parks and Recreation's operations to give them a little bit more support? Because I think it's a little bit more than facility if that's the case because you're, you know, you might be using the same staff, you know, and then there's a lot of coordination or whatever it may be, training. And so I think that would be a more appropriate move if, you know, if this was to be supported, is to have that go into Parks and Rec.
If I'm not mistaken, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but during COVID, when we had some of the centers that were used, yes, they were used at the centers, but it was with HRCS. So even though the center was used and it might be that they reimbursed, HRCS reimbursed them for their utilities or for their things. So I'm not, I'm not sure that Brett would want to take on that as a, as another permanent thing. So I'm just bringing that up for a thought process.
If I can point out-
We're going to limit, so.
Oh, no, I know. If I can point out, in, on that conversation, part of its personnel and, if you really want to do this, regardless of where it comes from, part of it is personnel and part of it is operations. We have to have staff that's in on overtime, that would be there at night. We have to have security that would man, that would, that would, that would be there to protect. A lot of this is, it's staffing and operations, it's both.
And I think that's what he did speak to. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think, you know, I appreciate the budget agreement that you and the mayor came through because I know it was, it was made in good faith and, you know, my promise was to not bring forth any amendments because of that and I, and I'm going to keep that promise. However, when we look at this, and again, you know, we need to look at this as kind of a trial thing for this, because we don't know how much it's going to cost. So we're doing this study, the study's coming back September 1st. Who knows? We may need more, we may need less. I mean, I doubt that we have, we will have 60 cold blue days or cold red days in a year. But I, you know, for me, notwithstanding the budget, it's important to me. It is critically important to me and we have, you know, we've had these discussions for many years and we've had people come up here to the dais during the coldest of cold days asking, what are we going to do for our less fortunate? And I think we have to start somewhere. And, you know, for me, again, you know, I will support this because this is something that I've been talking about for a while. So I think it's just important for us to, and then, you know, where the money comes from or how it eventually, you know, pans out, you know, there's always move and there's always wiggle room. There's never been a budget that hasn't come back and hasn't been amended and hasn't been, you know, touched or tweaked. But we have to start somewhere and we have to put it in place. And so, you know, if we look through this and we find out that the money is best to come from X versus Y versus Z, then so be it. But I think it's important for it to be in the budget. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Mine is I would move to recuse myself because I receive funding through HRCS. So I'm asking council to recuse me. You need to take that motion.
Okay, we got a motion to excuse Vice President Wood.
Recuse. You can excuse me. I'll walk, I will go, I will go home and let me tell a nice glass of wine and I'm good.
So there's a motion to recuse Councilman Carol Wood from the HRS, HRCS line.
Well, from this amendment that has to do with-
To do with HRCS. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please, do we need a roll call? All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign? All right.
For the record, on these votes, it is six votes on a recusal. You did it, but I just want to be sure you understand.
Yeah. We, we heard you when you read it, so we're, we're good. We're good. Okay, so with that, we have a motion before us and the motion before us is to remove $150,000 from the mayor's personnel line and $1,500 from the promotional line and this money be transferred into HRCS to accommodate a, for community centers for the potential of cooling and heating for the amount of $151,500. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I have a second amendment which has been passed out. I would like to first say this about the amendment. City council runs, all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I heard you say that you would lose your student aides with this, but city council has run with two people in our office doing all the work. They are incredible individuals. So I have a tough time when you say that you're not going to have any of this temporary help when we are bare bones up here. Our budget has stayed flat in this, here in city council. There's been very few changes. So I would like to move an amendment to remove the $118,000 of the mayor's temporary help and move $59,000 to local street funds and $59,000 to our sidewalk repair and maintenance.
We have a motion before us. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Jackson.
Just a quick question, maybe to our internal auditor. Does that line item of temporary help have anything to do with the line item that was just adjusted?
No, it's a separate line item.
I, I think I would disagree because we pass, we only pass two lines, personnel and operating, and this would, temporary help is under personnel.
Okay, then yes, President Wood's right, it is under personnel, so.
So we, yes. We do not pass a line item budget. We look at a line item budget, but we only pass two categories. One is personnel and one is operating. So if you're making adjustments, it's to those two.
Yeah, that's a good point, so, yes.
Okay, I had Councilmember Jackson, are you done?
I guess I'll just follow up. So then it's also true that the mayor could use that 118 that we're talking about and put it however he wants with his personnel.
Yeah, technically speaking, yes. Oh, is that better? But yes, technically speaking, that's correct.
I've got Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Spitzley, no?
It's just more of a point of clarification. So the last item that we passed, was it technically a proper amendment if it was to a line item versus the operations budget?
The last item we passed was coming out of the mayor's personnel.
Oh, okay, so that one is, okay, thank you.
And promotions would be coming out of operational.
So is the opera, is the promotion one-
Yes.
-a proper amendment? If it was, it was detailed to me as a line item, is that the line item code for operations or the line item code for mayor promotion?
What is the number? Is this for operation or is it for?
This is for promotion, but if you take out the 741200, then it would just be for operations.
So there needs to be a correction on that before we-
Yep.
Thank you for catching that.
Thank you all for catching.
Okay. Was there other comments? I'm not going to be supporting this and my reason for not supporting this is there are things that, motions that are going to come before us this evening that I agree with and disagree with. But I gave my word when I worked through this budget to the mayor and I intend to stand by my commitment. My dad said there is only one thing you take to your grave and that is your good name. And whether, and as I said, there are things that I might personally agree with, but I gave my commitment when we managed to bring what we have forward to you. So, just so people understand that. So with that, right now, we have a motion before us, there's no one else that would remove from... The motion will go, not from this, this is showing that the motion, it will end up in the budget the way it needs to in, in the amended budget. So what now we have is from the mayor's personnel line, an additional $118,000 removed from his budget and $59,000 would go to local streets and $59,000 would go to sidewalks. All those in favor, say aye? Opposed? So that's three, three opposed, the motion carries. Councilmember Cost.
That's it, thank you.
You're not doing the third, the third one? Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there other motions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I have two additional ones and I had three, but I'm putting the warming center aside because it was acted on. I was just trying to think because I know we need to cut, I know we need to be smart about our money, but there's still a few things that I cannot allow to go without mentioning the warming centers because we heard all about it. And my next amendment will be Zoom capabilities for city council meetings. Two options to fund it.
You, you have them to hand out to councilmembers, please.
I sure do. You need one?
And I understand that you have two options, but you need to, from an amendment standpoint, you need to move one and then if that fails, you need to move the other. So you need to make your decision on what you're doing.
Yes, let's start with option number one.
Okay.
So we've heard over the course of, I don't know, a couple of years now, that the public would like to participate more in our meetings and that some people feel like they are prohibited from doing so for a variety of reasons and it all comes down to being able to come up here at this time of day on Monday and leave whatever they got behind at home to come to our meetings and sit here for hours before they pretty much can speak on whatever they want. Of course, you can speak earlier, but you still got to come here, you still got to park, you still got to take care of your kids or whatever else you got going on, your job. It all has to be pushed aside to be able to come participate in city, local city government. Now, throughout, I mean, we've passed a resolution saying that we want two-way communications and we also heard from, I believe it was our 54A district court person who said that they run Zoom as far as people can appear remotely or appear in person, or one person can be remotely and one person can be in person and we can all have a meeting. Now, the money for that, they said, is pretty much very minimal because it just needs a person to run it. I thought we could get a volunteer, but that didn't go anywhere. So what this amendment does is it proposes to eliminate $38,000 from the HRCS personnel costs by removing a vacant position, HMIS performance analyst position that's been vacant for some years now and ultimately would turn that into the Office of Community Media Center so that they could hire a part-time person to run Zoom or whatever we use to allow people to come into the meeting. If someone's talking too much, you can mute them, you can disconnect them. And that's pretty much the extent. Now, when that person is not doing our work as far as running our Zoom meetings, they would be stationed in that Office of Community Media and I heard from Dominic Cochran who said that even on a part-time basis, there's many tasks and many needs for a person to help with. So this would be a way to allow for remote access to our meetings and to participate and ultimately it will just let so many more people who would otherwise not be able to come or participate to have them come and let their voice be heard and whatever it is, even if it's, you know, appealing a decision to, you know, for trash removal and they couldn't make it but for this. appealing a decision to, you know, for trash removal and they couldn't make it but for this. Whatever it is, it shouldn't matter as long as they are following the rules for participation because that's what we're here for and that's what we want to see. So I would move option one, which would take from a vacant performance analyst position in HRCS and move that to Office of Community Media Center so that this person can run Zoom and we can meet the needs of the people. I would move option one.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Again, I have recused myself from anything with HRCS, so I will, I don't believe I have to do it again. All right, it was done once. Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Could I see hands? I didn't see. Okay, three. You were in favor? Okay. Okay, I thought I heard three. So one, two, three, and I'm a recusal, so. Yes, you may.
Can I, can I have it real quick?
Sure.
And I just wanted to be clear that I do support this. I don't support, I would have supported the miscellaneous from city council. And the reason is that in ad hoc homelessness, we are hearing a lot about HMIS. We're hearing a lot about the fact that that is absolutely detrimental to what we're trying to do to provide housing security for individuals and to cut a position. That speaks to that. I would have much rather seen us tighten our belts. And if you've seen where I live, if you've seen my car, personally, I'm all about tightening belts. I don't have any problem cutting from your budget, nor do I have a problem cutting from mine when it's good for the city of Lansing. But again, I think option two actually would have been the better option. Thank you.
Okay, this, this is, now, unless you're pulling your amendment because we have a motion here and we have a request for a roll call. So you either pull it.
Well, I guess for the attorney, can I pull it and bring it back? After option two?
If the second one.
All right. I would pull this option one so that I can present option two.
Just a second. What was?
I would pull option one so we can present option two first.
All right, now present option two.
All right, same thing, except for the funds comes from our very own city council committee. This is what I initially thought would be the best because it's kind of our meetings, even though it's all city business. But I didn't know what the pleasure of the council would be. So hearing from Adam, especially with the leader that you are, I would pull just to put that one first to see. Even though it sounds like number one may have passed, almost about to. But I still, hearing the explanation, would still put number two first. So I'll pull number one. Just put number two down. Sorry for the confusion.
I've got Councilmember Brown. And did I see Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Council President. And I agree with you too, Adam, in the sentiments and statements that you've made. What I was under the impression, the reason I was supporting this, is that the city of Lansing was no longer dealing with HMIC this position and it was with the COC. So that was the reason for mine. But if we're going to do this in-house, then of course, we do need a position like that. But from my understanding, they had moved this outside of the city of Lansing.
Just a second. Emily, can you double check and see from the council budget? Because we have taken from operations already, is that, do we have?
Yes. So if both pass, then the council operating budget would be reduced to $115,609.
Pardon?
If both the budget resolution that council put forward and this amendment passed, the operating budget for council will be reduced to $115,609.
Okay.
Madam President.
Okay. I've got Councilmember Spitzley and then Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember Spatafor. I agree. I mean, I think we need to lead by example. Someone needs to lead by example. And, you know, and so the budget, it should come out of our budget. But I will say that that position has been open for quite a while. And if it was a priority for HRCS, it would have been filled. So I will leave it there. Thank you.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I was going to ask for, I don't have the line items in front of me, but what this does to like our community, community support funds and things like that, how much is in our operations and where it goes, but we can sort that out.
And I don't have that right.
That's why I was going to ask, but thought better of it. So, thank you.
We can have that for you tonight if you want, but I don't have it for you right now. Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing, okay. Vice President Garza.
So with this, what is it, the the media center, the Office of Community Media, that is housed under the mayor's budget though, correct?
Correct.
So would we in turn be given back to the mayor's budget? Would he be able to, would you be able to take that money and use it for something else if we made this amendment?
Yes. Yes, he could. Councilmember Brown.
Can you clarify that?
It's really easy. It goes into personnel and they could decide to hire or not to hire a person. It's as simple as that.
I think Jim would
Councilmember Spatafor.
I think Jim often points out too, that appropriation is not a mandate to
Correct. So it could be used to bulk up some other salaries. It could be, you know, I mean, there is no, there is no, yep.
Yep. So, and I think you were looking at me. So what I would say is this budget that we pass needs to be a reflection of our priorities. The way he spends the money demonstrates a reflection of his priorities. So if, if we actually do put forth this money in the budget that is passed by council, if it should withstand mayor veto, and then the money is not spent for that, then we're having a different conversation next year. But we're not the ones being held accountable. Right?
Are there, are there other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? So it's two, it passes. All right. Are there any other amendments? Councilmember Jackson.
Last one that I have here, again, I'm only trying to think of things that I've heard are very important. And as you know, we are in a warming planet. All the top scientists are telling us that we must, thank you. That we must make some corrections to the way we live, the way that we use energy, the way that our buildings are made. Pretty much a lot of things we do that we take for granted, we have to start to change or else we will continue to be doomed. I know it sounds tough, but I'm just encourage everybody, as I always have, to read what the International Panel on Climate Change has put out in their 2018 1.5 report. And more recently, their 2023, five-year from their report that says, OSHIT, it's getting worse and we need to do things faster. I'm convinced that at some point, there's going to be either federal mandates or somebody's going to make the city of Lansing do things. But we don't have to wait for that because we know it's a priority. And what I'm proposing here is to allow our sustainability manager, she's in charge of and has developed our climate action plan and works at making our buildings energy efficient. Looks at everything that we can do as a city that we can control as far as reducing emissions, reducing electricity use. All those different things are important and they save money in the long run when you reduce electricity and make your buildings, you know, more energy efficient and all these different things that the climate action plan asks for. But the problem is, is that in 2019, we got the position of a sustainability manager. Lori Welsh is doing a great job. We developed our climate action plan that we worked hard on. The mayor and his office promoted it pretty hard as far as what we're doing. But the problem is now is that they have no money to do anything, no money to operate. And we had Lori Welsh into the committee last year and she mentioned a bunch of things that she could use money for because I believe her operating budget might be around $25,000 or even less than that right now. But she's listed things that need to be done in promotion of our climate action plan, including fleet assessment, water fixture audit, a pilot program for organics collection, sustainability features incorporated into the Capital Area Recycling Education Center. She needs money to do any of the things that we said is important for her to do. And I am asking that we eliminate or move $100,000 from the public service operating expenses and put it into the public service sustainability line items for miscellaneous operating and contractual services. Again, the point is to give our sustainability manager, who we're also proud of, that department, give them a little bit of money coming in so that they can carry out some of the plans that everybody has worked so hard to try to implement. And I would move that amendment.
Councilmember Jackson, I don't believe this is a legal motion. As I indicated before, we have two lines that we approve, personnel and operating. So you are already approving operating dollars for public service. We do not approve line items for sustainability, recycling, or anybody else. So you could put together a budget policy asking that the department use $100,000 of their operating money toward the goals that you are asking for. But you cannot put in a line item amendment.
I guess I shouldn't call it a line item then. Does that make it?
It's still, you're still taking operating money. It's operating money and there's not, it doesn't go anywhere. It's operating to operating, public service to public service. So you're doing nothing.
I understand. Okay. Well, unfortunately, I guess I am going to have to withdraw that. I'm going to have to withdraw that motion then.
Okay. Are there any other motions? Seeing none, what I would ask is that we divide the question before us right now. I would ask that the HRCS budget be pulled out and voted on separately. So I would, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. I would also ask that the budget for the Department of Economic Development and Planning be also be
Okay.
set aside.
All right. Are there any others that need to be pulled out? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
54A District Court and
Fees.
and fees of rental property talk because I have
The fees are all together, so you'd have to just not vote on all the fees.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So what we'll start off with is the Economic Development Corporation budget. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. I request I be recused from voting.
All right.
Because of potential complex, conflict.
We have a motion to recuse Councilmember Spitzley from voting on the Economic Development Corporation budget. All those in favors, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. With that, I, we have a motion for the Economic Development Corporation budget. All those in favor of passing
Is it this proposed one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All those in favors, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Seven, one, passes. Oh, I'm sorry. Six, one. Yes, we got to make sure that we didn't do that. District Court, Councilmember Jackson.
I would move to recuse myself so that there's no appearance of impropriety as I work in the courts.
And motion to recuse Councilmember Jackson from District Court. All those in favors, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, six, one. All right. With that, we have the District Court budget. All those in favor of District, the You support his recusal. Okay. So all those in favor of the District Court budget, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, six, one. And next, we have the HRCS budget. And I've already asked for a recusal on that and that has been voted on. So all those in favor of the HRCS budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's six, one. Now for the remainder of the budget, no, let's pull out the fees. Councilmember Jackson.
I would move to recuse myself over the fee question.
All right, we have a motion for recusal by Councilmember Jackson on the fees. All those in favor of recusal, Councilmember Spatafor? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, passes. Now for the fees. All those in favor of the fees, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that passes seven, one, with one being a recusal. Now on the remainder of the budget. All those in favor of the remainder of the budget, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes seven, one. Okay, that takes us to budget policies. Okay. This book changed a number of the dates so that they are corresponding with the correct year. You will see on page four in the red for the call center, the 311 call center. Instead of an annually, there was a request for a biannually reporting of that. And then there are one, two, three, three additional requests for budget policies. I would recognize Councilmember, oh, he's gone. Okay, I would recognize Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So what I have in the budget priorities is for warming and cooling centers. You know, we've voted on a certain dollar amount to initially set up heating and warming centers, but to really be responsible and great stewards of taxpayer dollars, you really needed to study it and see, you know, exactly how much it costs. I am not in favor of a standalone central site because we need to have locations in all our quadrants here so that folks are able to access them instead of requiring people who may not have transportation to go to one central location. And in my mind, and this is just what I've read in the news And in my mind, and this is just what I've read in the newspaper, I really think the cost is prohibitive. I mean, $2.9 million, I think, was the estimate by HRCS. And we can do better, I believe. And so what I'm requesting as part of the budget priorities is that the administration, you know, do a study or whatever to determine the cost to run per day, the community centers, the four community centers, Alfred Schmidt Center, Guyer, Letts, and Foster as warming and cooling centers. I stay on here for a total of approximately 60 days in a year. I don't expect that we will need them for 60 days, but we might. So, you know, let's, let's, let's just make sure we do a complete and comprehensive study. And that would include utilities, staff, and security. You know, if they're in our city buildings, we need security. That's just all there is to it. You know, one of the things that I would, in my perfect world, we'd also have an EMS person there as well. To have folks come in, some of those people might be sick or ill, but I think that we could evaluate them and make sure that, you know, they don't need additional medical help. And so I'm hoping that we get that report back to council no later than September 1st, 2023, so that we can start planning whether or not we need budget amendments or, you know, if there's funding available. I know that, I hear that there's a funding request for $800,000. But we'll have a better idea of how much we need to exactly do this. So that's why I have that in there. Thank you.
So we have a motion to include this as part of our budget policies. Are there any other questions on this? Seen none, all those in favor of including this, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Councilmember Cost, since you're back, we'll take yours next.
Thank you, President Wood. I have in here a request for, it came from the employees that work at forestry and talking with them, and talking to the citizens here in the city. We've cut down a lot of trees this year. We've got a lot of stumps everywhere and people simply can't afford to pay for stump removal. So I would propose that we do a study to determine the number of employees and the amount of equipment. And then based on the recommendation on how many stumps can be removed that year, the results of the study be presented to city council no later than 9/1 of 23.
We have a motion to add this to our budget policies. Are there any questions on this? Councilmember or Vice President Garza.
Thanks, Council President. Councilman Cost, I appreciate you doing this because actually I had a stump in my front ear for quite some time. But I guess I'm curious, would this be to add additional full-time staff with benefits or contracting?
I would like to see union jobs in this position, city workers doing this. I do believe that we have the equipment and from what I understand, it is operational.
Okay. Well, I would be supportive of using the staff we currently have, if not hiring more.
And Vice President Garza, this is asking for the study, so it would come back before our budget priorities that would go to the mayor for the, for the next year's budget. So at that point, you, you know, we could make some additional comments at that point.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I was just making sure if that's what the, I mean, the intent was, because we have enough contracting positions.
Not a problem. Any other comments on this? Seen none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I'm requesting the administration to work with community mental health and working with so many constituents as well as hearing so many, much testimony from agencies and from individuals on the mental health crisis and challenge we're having and relating to how it is causing homelessness for people in our community, to work with community mental health for a feasibility study on adding, partnering with them for a social work specializing in housing outreach for individuals with mental illness and families, and to be able to report back the status on 9/1, 2023.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seen none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? And then Councilmember Spatafor, you had added language as part of a budget policy for an expungement clinic. Last year, that is something that's been incorporated. So we did take that out. Do you have any objection to that? Okay. So you have no objection to taking that out. So we have a motion to remove the budget policy language on expunging clinics. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Yeah, I'm sorry for just bringing this up now, but I noticed in carryforwards, the language wasn't adjusted to reflect the current fiscal year and wondered if that was supposed to change or if we should remove the carryforward language. Yeah, it should read 2023 and then 2024.
Yeah.
I would make that amendment.
We'll make that correction. Is there anything else? I. On changing the date? We, if you want, we can.
I'm just adding.
Yeah. We can do that.
Make sure it's clean.
Yeah. No, we have a motion to correct the date. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. One other thing I did want to add, I know we've talked repeatedly up here as well as in the public about strategic planning and to look at our, how we move forward with our budget. I know that, and I'll be making the same announcement during the council meeting. I know the Ways and Means Chair has taken this seriously and wants to look at this issue in ways and means and what we will be requesting from the Ways and Means Chair, the same as we did from the Public Safety Chair, is that as they're working on this each month, that they bring forth a report once a month between now and the end of the year, talking about those issues. And Mayor Shaw, we're hoping that the first council meeting in June, that we could have Shelby Freire here to talk about, you know, the things that she's doing and some of her ideas at that time. So if you could look at, seeing, I think that's the 12th, June 12th, if you could look at that, that would be good. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things. The first thing, on page two, under Human Services, Community Supported Agencies Funding, you know, we have requested a quarterly report on the status of human services and community-supported agencies funding. I'm not really quite sure we've ever gotten that. I still want it in there. I just want to highlight that that is a critical report that we really have not received ever.
One of the things I would, sorry to cut you off, Councilmember Spitzley. One of the things I would recommend is after the passage of our budget policies, that we work with staff, some of these can be assigned to particular committees, like city operations, HRCS under city operations, and making sure that those are, reports are given at that, at that time and then given on to the full council, if that works.
Thank you, Madam President. And then the last thing I have to comment on is on page four, Lansing Home Ownership Program for Employees to El Hope. I totally, totally, totally support this. What I ask publicly is that we use it more as a recruiting tool as we are recruiting our police and fire. I think it's, and our public service folks, I think it's a strong recruitment tool. And if we're looking at tipping the scales to get good people in, you know, helping you with home ownership, that's, you know, and in this market, I think is critical. And so I don't know, you know, that's just my comment. I don't know where that goes, but we really need to do a better job in the administration of highlighting this and making this a tool for recruit, successful recruitment of staff.
Mayor Shaw.
Just to comment on that, we absolutely do that. We use this in every pitch for police officers, firefighters, for all of our employees, and we're trying to leverage that with other agencies to actually put more money in. So we are 100% doing that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned until seven. Pardon?
Do we vote out of here or?
Oh, I'm sorry. We voted on the amendments, we didn't vote on the entire document. Thank you. So Councilmember Spitzley moved the entire document. All those in favor of the budget policies, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Thank you for the catch.
It's all right. Listen, I'm slow, but every once in a while, I catch, I catch the mail truck. Every once in a while, that mail truck, I catch it. So, you know, just trying to do what I'm doing.
Priorities until or unless there's a real problem to address.
Right. Lauren Hirsch at the New York Times. Thanks, Lauren. Good to talk to you.
Thanks for having me.